Podium?
Absolutely, you may. We encourage it.
So formal.
Um, I don't have the page with all the numbers in front of me, however, I know we're down a little bit.
You can borrow mine if you want.
After much thought on that, it's because I have not, haven't been patrolling this much because gas prices are a little bit higher than normal. However, doesn't mean I'm not busy, had to work on policies that we need to come in compliance with the crime commission, so that's kind of what I've been doing. Um, traffic stops, some juvenile cases, school stuff, so.
Well, there were some numbers and categories that was up.
There were, you're right. Um, but yeah, starting, it was, it was a busy month. I don't wanna say it was slow, so. You guys got any questions?
I have none. Anybody else?
Huh? Okay.
All right, thank you so much. Keep up the great work.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Susan, economic development?
Hello, everybody. Okay, we have not heard an update yet on that grant that we submitted for additional funding for our housing project. Although they think, um, that it might be in the next couple of weeks, then we'll find out. So, we're eligible for another eighty-four thousand dollars, which would help. And we've also had some good news, we've heard that, um, the lumber prices and construction costs might be coming down here in the next couple of months, which would be to our advantage, so. We're all just waiting for that. Um, I think Lowell is supposed to be here a little bit later, he's gonna talk to you guys about that comp and strat plan, adopting that, so I'll skip over that for now. I think that's it for that. Um. We have some exciting news. Um, so last month I told you that we were nominated for the Governor's Showcase Community Award by UNL. And I worked with Marilyn Schleick on that application, and we won. So, we are the Governor's twenty twenty-two showcase community, which is a huge honor. Um, there were a lot of benchmarks that you had to hit just to apply. Uh, it's based off the last five years of economic development success, and it had to be excellent success. So I have copies of the application for you, and then the press release that, uh, came out today. So the Lieutenant Governor is gonna be in Plainview on Thursday. Um, he'll be here at noon. Um, he has an award for the city, um, so.
In two days on Monday, Thursday?
This Thursday. Um, so he will be here at noon, at eleven, to do the award. And then, um, I'll be taking him on a tour of the community and the projects that were outlined in DED. So, there were over eighty applicants this year, um, so it was kinda nice to be able to, to win that one. It is a big deal. Um, communities in the past that have been awarded have all continued to have great success. North Platte, Central City, Red Cloud, uh, Beatrice, we're now in that group, so, uh, it's pretty nice. So, that took a little bit of time, people working with his office on that, but, uh, as far as economic development goes, um, we do have some headway on some housing projects that might be going forward. We have a developer that's interested in a vacant property here in town. Um, we'll be going to zoning and planning, we need a variance of one to two feet. You know, they don't like to do those, but it's literally like one to two feet, we're hoping that can go, and we'll have a duplex, um, that's our current vacant lot. So we're working on that, and then that developer is also interested in, um, putting up to sixteen units on the north side of town, up where our current fourplex would go. So, we really wanna encourage our relationship with this developer, and I'll bring him forward as soon as we get through zoning and planning, so you guys can talk to him and see all the images. But, it's kind of exciting that we're gonna be, you know, tackling some more housing. Um, obviously, there will be a little bit of participation requested from our community for that. Um, give you some assistance with the lot purchase or something like that, so I'll let you guys know how that goes. Uh, we do, are working on a couple new businesses that are coming, we're still looking at August for the opening dates on those. And DTR is moving along, uh, the windows and the doors and those things are starting to finally come in, so you're starting to see some work happen downtown, and I think we'll have a busy summer ahead. So, we're pretty excited about those things. I will give you guys copies of this.
Give me a short?
Yes, I will give you one. Um, any questions? No? Okay. If you guys can be here Thursday at eleven, that'd be great.
Where we meet up here or?
Right here on the laundry, yep. Um, Brooke will have her press release and the paper on Wednesday. Obviously doesn't give the community a lot of notice, but.
Does Brooke already have copies of them?
He does have the press release, yep, I sent it to him today.
Okay.
So, and he has the application too.
Okay.
If you can give me the paper copy.
Thank you, Susan.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Did you see from the tenant, read the report? Any questions for her, me?
Yeah, I think I'll get here later on, so hopefully they show up.
Okay, sounds good. So, the attorney, Mr. Curtis?
Other than what's on the agenda, excuse me, the only thing that occurred to me today, check on the situation with the litigation in the Dollar Store, I thought you might like a report.
Absolutely.
I got an answer back from Mark. He still had, or had that motion filed, if you recall. I think, far enough back, he maybe told you about it. He was gonna file a motion to dismiss.
Right.
That they hadn't gone clear through the administrative process yet, so they didn't even qualify to be fiddling about in court. And the judge has now sat on that motion for something like six weeks, and there's still no decision. So, uh, Mark suggested that now if somebody has thought about it, there'll probably be a decision soon, when he answered me today. I don't know if that's a legal analysis or just what usually happens.
And this is one in Omaha, the federal court?
Yeah. So it's still sitting there with his motion on the table. And, once that comes back, it will continue, or well, maybe it'll go away unless, depending on how that goes, if the guy is sitting on it this long, he must be considering it fairly seriously. But I don't know if he's trying to write an elaborate opinion, or do more research, or what he's doing. But anyway, it's still out there. And that's all I had that was separate, we've got some ordinances for vacating a street here later on.
They still haven't filed for SUP or building permit, right?
No.
Okay, I had somebody ask me the days. Thank you. Number five, discussion, action, special designated liquor license request for Keystone Beer Garden Street Dance, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, from eleven AM to two AM the following day.
You don't make them up?
Sure, if you have any que- or if they have any questions for you.
Pretty much be the same. On the other, it'll be, uh.
And it looks at a Friday or Saturday?
It's Saturday. Um, Muff's Run, it's an annual.
Oh, sure.
Booker Run that they have every year, and this is their fifteenth annual, and so they wanna do band and stuff this year. So, that's why I've never shut the street down for this before, but, so I would like to, I put in noon. It'd probably be more like one, two o'clock, because it'll be after.
Sure.
Everybody leaves there, and then we can get a trailer in and set up for the band on the street. So it'll just be from the alley up to Locust Street on the west side of the building.
See, any issue this working?
Special doesn't have a liquor permit for Keystone?
Second?
I'll second.
And then discussion, Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Number six and seven, the annuals. I did the library at the special meeting last month, so, uh, number six, proclamation Nebraska Public Transportation Week, April seventeenth to the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Go anywhere public transit week, whereas Nebraska Public Transportation Week has been declared for April seventeenth to the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the date was chosen to honor the public transportation systems across Nebraska, including the local system, better known as the Plainview Handyman. And whereas public transportation systems across the state of Nebraska are celebrating public transportation during this timeframe. And whereas every year thousands of Nebraska citizens are able to participate in using public transportation to help them remain independent. And whereas Plainview has continued to support the use of public transportation throughout the year. And whereas Plainview recognizes the hard work and dedication that the city staff, and especially the drivers do to help make the Plainview Handyman service an integral part of lives of many residents in the community. Now therefore be it resolved that by virtue of the authority invested in me as mayor of the Plainview, as mayor of the city of Plainview, Nebraska, I Brian Schloty do hereby issue this proclamation to declare public transportation. And I do hereby declare April seventeenth to the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two to be public transportation week. And number seven, proclamation Arbor Day, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Tree City USA official proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our home, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, increase the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I Brian Schloty, Mayor of the City of Plainview, do hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two as Arbor Day in the city of Plainview. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this time, of this and future generations. Dated this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-two.
Mayor Schloty?
Yes.
The memorial cemetery will be having trees, so if anybody wants to buy a tree and put it in there, I'll sure take it.
Perfect. Thank you for that information. Um, number eight, discussion, action, approval of pool board recommendations for employees. And I attended that meeting, you see the, um, hire all returning guards, Taya, Emmy, Emma, and Ronnie. Hire all new guards, Hannah, Ethan, Brooke, Corbin, and Bailey. And, as I can see, okay, so those are the two.
Allison, yeah.
Allison for the manager, so that would be the first one for number eight.
Can you motion?
Yes.
To make a motion to approve the, uh, pool board people recommended by the pool board?
Okay, second?
Well, second, then.
Okay, Pam?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Number nine, discussion, action, approval of pool board recommendations for wages, they felt it was in order to give the returning, uh, guards a raise. So the return, returning, or sorry, we'll start. The new guards are nine fifty an hour, the returning is ten dollars an hour, and the manager eleven seventy-five an hour. Same, made a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve the wage recommendations of the pool board, for the boys.
Second, then. Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. And number ten, discussion, action, approval of pool board recommendation for pool pass prices twenty twenty-two, which is the same as last year. A family season pass up to four members, one hundred dollars. Family season pass for more than four members, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and a single season pass sixty dollars. Daily prices, junior high to adult, three dollars, kindergarten to sixth grade, two dollars. Ages five and under, free, and party price is seventy-five dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve the pool pass prices for twenty twenty-two from the pool board.
Okay, second?
Second, then.
Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries three to zero. Number eleven, discussion, action, approval of seasonal parking points. I didn't have that one in my head.
We just got one applicant, came in later, it was, uh, Andrew Howlett.
Okay. Oh.
So, um, we usually use three, we're just getting more applications in, so I mean, if, we might spread the word again, see if we can't get some later applications in. But, uh, currently we have one, so he is going to be busy and tired.
Not too tired.
What?
Or please make him really tired.
I was still, I was still the words not.
What?
Make him tired.
Okay, what does the council wish to do?
Prove that hire Andrew?
Okay, second?
Second.
You made Chris my A.
Bob?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. And number twelve, discussion, action, approval of wages for seasonal park employees.
Oh, I thought he came in with yours.
Well, I'm asking for a raise.
About nine dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Same as the pool then, nine fifty?
Starting out, yep, yep, he's new, we had him in there, we'll see how it looks out.
Okay.
Oh, he'll work.
What's that?
He'll work.
Every time mom's on duty anyway.
A motion for nine fifty an hour? Second, all in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Number thirteen, discussion, action, approval of street closures for Clown Days Carnival, which is between the s- schools, right?
Yep, this is to actually set the carnival there, and have it, it'll be all the way from, well, pretty much from Banshell to all the main, yep.
Main, uh, we, yeah.
Right?
About two blocks.
Right, I mean, we don't. Yeah, I'll say that. And we might have to take like, some grassy areas, like that parking spot for the bumper cars or something, that's fine. Never had a mechanical carnival, so.
Oh, we.
Not quite sure how much space they need, so we're learning this year.
In the past, it'd been two to three blocks, depending on which. Okay, what does the council wish to do?
I'll make the motion to approve the street closures for Clown Carnival.
Okay, second?
Second, then.
Okay, Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Number fourteen, Keno grants, first one is for Plainview Historical Society for one thousand dollars to put electricity to the red barn. Is Mr. Swan back here? They've been talking about this for a number of years, I know.
So that barn is the barn that sits right directly to the west of the current historical society. And so they can utilize it, it's not very much, you're just gonna put lights in there, just light bulbs, and so they can put stuff in there and people can actually see it, so.
I think a motion approved the Keno grant to the Plainview Historical Society.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. And the next one is the Junior Pirate Posse, five thousand dollar playground equipment for elementary school, and Mrs. Redfish here. If you have any questions for her?
Will you stand up?
Said this is her fourth meeting in twenty-four hours.
I, I have a question, have you contacted the school board yet?
We have not. Um, I know Dr. Earl has said, uh, once we get so much money, he looks, he wants to talk to the school board and head back to what we raised. So.
Okay, so in your application, you said, the end, you said by May first, so you're gonna get seventy-five thousand dollars by May first?
Next year, correct?
Oh, next year, yes, okay. Cause then, cause then, way we did, it goes into your receipts, I'm just worried about like fiscal year, so we'd be five thousand fiscal year of twenty-two, twenty-three, correct? Next May, next, not this May, next May.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I forgot to announce to the public, sorry, as of the end of March, the available balance was sixty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars and seven cents, six eight, two six, nine oh seven. So, thank you to everybody that has been playing Keno and Plainview to build the balance back up. And this was set up for the youth and community betterment improvements.
I would like to make the motion to approve the five thousand Keno grant for the playground, Cobin at the elementary.
Okay, second? Um, Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries three to zero. Number? Okay, number seventeen, discussion, action, ordinance number nine seven eight, vacate Pacific Avenue between Pine Street and First Street. And the property owners here, we have any questions? It would be for those of you, so it'd be, we go this street here all the way down to the dead end, it's Orgino Shenours, like, uh, used to be, but be back to, be from there, one block to the east, it's where currently a grassy pasture, it's not a street. There is just platter.
Seems to you that don't do well with two blocks from the old oak tree here.
No, that's not.
And I, I spoke to him. And the purchase agreement for him to get it, it may be, is in progress, so.
We're just waiting to see if it, if it can even be done.
See, the purpose of closing the alley is he wants to build a big Nebraska alley.
Oops, I'll get up for the next one. So that's the map. And.
It's really hard to explain it, unless he almost dragged out a lot of that.
It runs basically parallel to the railroad tracks, and like I said, it's in the pasture right now, it's.
That's why we have a map.
Yep. I was explaining to the audience.
Yeah, yeah, I, I drove down there, you also surveyed it, right?
Yes.
So there's some little flags out there. I, I think you should highly recommend eighteen inches of field dirt under the building, but that's a separate question.
Yeah, I think so.
Really don't see any issue with doing this, or it's, uh.
Yeah, currently he's stored all his stuff, even on the street and more, and they hay it or whatever currently anyway, so you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know it's that much, just in this map.
Yeah, I never even thought about it when we started the plan, till the survey came.
You found out how much you didn't own?
I never considered there being an alley there, it looks like a boulder, I'm way to leave, but.
Really, in, at that, at that location, Pacific Avenue does not exist and has not existed. It's just damp sod down by the railroad.
Yeah, I've never heard that name.
There's not any street there that really goes anywhere, it's the railroad track.
Do you ha- oh, sorry, number seventeen?
Yeah, I've got drafts of an ordinance for the street.
Yep, yep.
I was just looking for my drafts of the ordinance for the alley, but I think I have a whole bunch of street and no alley. Pass that original down, just so far, you have the one for the alley, I'll describe it to you. If you look at that map, on the left-hand side, there's a little jog, and it goes a little higher.
Yep.
You see that? Well, that jog that goes higher is lot fifteen, I believe. And, if you vacated the alley adjacent to lot fifteen, there's a neighbor on the east that would have to be notified and given an opportunity to respond. So what I've got is to vacate the alley between lots seven and fourteen, and then numbering the lots on and around the circle, that's the ordinance she has. So that eliminates the need to notify any residential owners. The other issue we've got, as far as notifying folks, or the code book says, we have to notify adjacent property owners. The railroad would be an adjacent property owner. But, it's hard to believe they would care, and they get half if they vacated it just in the normal course of business. So, I can't imagine that this would ever result in a problem or anybody objecting. I, you know, assuming that we're okay with it, or everyone else is okay with that theory. You know, if you vacate that stub of the alley and all of that stub of the, what is platted as a street, then it just ties half the street to the lots, and the alley merges into the lots and that sort of, and it'll all just be one big piece of property, so. We'll be.
Did you bring the wind with you, Lowell?
She, Courtney has the ordinance on the alley, I don't know if you've introduced them both, I handed out the ordinance on the street.
No, I just did one at a time, I just did the first.
Yeah, and we didn't define it to, to any great extent, just vacate Pine Street or part Pacific Avenue from Pine to First.
Yeah, the ones that staple, I have both, both ordinance.
Oh, is there, is the second page?
Yeah, the second one, yes, on the staple, yeah. Yeah, on the staple.
I got, often help who knows what they're doing.
A lot of the two pages.
Could've fooled, could've fooled me, yeah, that's the original.
You want train?
You got two?
I just got the one.
No, I gave him one.
Give me that one back.
Yep, that's the street, and then the alley would be between those two.
The street or you're going north?
No. Yep, that's. Well theoretically, cause years ago, we gave, most of it, they wanted to build mini storage, you know, what, cause they said the street ran through, you know, it runs at an angle. But it's like three that house, it's all on four streets, it's platter, but no, yeah. Okay, does, uh, council wish to take action for vacating the street, or Pacific Avenue, uh, ordinance number nine seven eight, item number seventeen?
Motion of pass orders, nine seven eight?
Okay, one second. Second, um, Bob?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero on first reading?
Motion, wave second, third reading?
Second?
Second.
Second, Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes on second and third reading. Number eighteen, discussion, action, ordinance number nine seven nine to vacate the alley.
Make a motion of pass orders, nine seven nine?
Second?
Well, second.
Okay, Pam?
Before you call it, and you're promising us, Jan knows about this, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I gave you the new.
And you are gonna buy the property from him.
Yeah. I guess.
Okay, he's on the record.
Okay. While I'm here, would you guys object to me cutting the curb out and putting a driveway into it, from where it turns and heads north? Okay, what about the water that runs through there?
Now you're pushing it, right? One thing at a time.
I know, that's why I'm only going slow.
Yes, it does, it does run.
We can work something out. Tyler?
Aye.
Pam? Bob?
Hi.
Motion passes three to zero on first reading?
Wave second, third reading?
Second.
Well, second, then, too.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam? Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes on second and third reading. Let me go down to number nineteen, discussion, action, resolution number six five one, commercial and residential solid waste points. Unfortunately, this had to do with the increase in the diesel price.
Yeah, I didn't bring anything for that, cause that was, um, it was obviously a dollar twenty-five, we already put ahead of it. And then it was more for discussion, as if we wanted to add anything on top of it for all of our extra costs, or we'll just try and maintain ourselves. I didn't run any numbers, cause we ran them already, we tried compensating through the transportation, and all this, we know, with the economy and things been going, so I kinda left it up to what the council felt was equitable, either way, so. Kinda left more for, I would, I would obviously say we should definitely do the dollar twenty-five, cause that comes out of our pocket, that's what we already have to pass on to BUDs. And then if you wanted to go to like three dollars, be an extra dollar seventy-five for the city's half, that would be a suggestion, but it's entirely, I wanna see what you guys wanna think about it.
I would personally prefer to wait, that's.
Fantastic.
You know, maybe a month or two or three more, and just see what happens, cause it could go down.
Could.
And then we could go back at them and say, hey, we need to undo this, at least half of it, you know, they could be this halfway.
So you're saying wait on everything, or wait on?
No.
Just go with the dollar twenty-five, or?
Go with the dollar twenty-five.
I personally would let it wait on everything.
I guess I, I kinda think that we should make up bold for their, their up costs.
So if they, I mean, what if it goes down, though, then we gotta undo it?
So.
We never will undo it.
Yep, so for us to start initiation has to go down, I believe, for sixty or ninety days, and has to go down to three fifty or three twenty-five, these will last be down at low.
I would just prefer to wait at least a month or two, see what happens.
That's fine.
Revisit it? I don't know, that's my.
You wanna make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to table that for them.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler? Motion passes two to one. And it is seven o'clock, uh, Mr. Schroeder, number fifteen, public hearing, seven o'clock PM, community comprehensive plan. Hopefully everybody was able to pre-read the fifty-seven pages online, so it's no surprise for you when he puts it, or when he talks about it.
So it's just open for public comment?
Absolutely.
I'll just give it.
You weren't gonna, you weren't gonna do the slide?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Oh, not again, Lowell?
No, we'll see, you can read the high school students' report on the meeting for that.
It was very good.
Uh, so basically what a comprehensive plan is, is.
Or do you wanna stand, or just face the audit, sorry, or just turn, so they can hear you, sorry about that, thank you.
Uh, Lowell wrote a five-room role planning, and we were working with the city, uh, on updating the comprehensive plan as a part of a big overall planning project that, uh, Pierce County Economic Development received funding for, for both Madison and Pierce County. A comprehensive plan basically is just a document, uh, that, that meets the requirements of state statutes, that looks at the land use, transportation, public facilities, um, and different needs in the county for growth, and once that plan is completed and adopted. And once that plan is completed and adopted, then the city can, um, adopt and, and maintain zoning ordinances which impact, you can affect, determine how the community grows. You know, so basically like, uh, for, for permits for different types of uses and it helps you to kinda help the community to grow in an orderly process. This is residential, this is commercial, this is industrial, that type of use. So, so basically the plan is really just a documentation of the conditions of the community that we, um, obtained data through census data, uh, through a visual analysis of the community through, uh, data off the GIS workshop site for Pierce County, accumulating that data and also public input, which was acquired through the recap process, combining that and, um, compiling all that information, presenting it to the planning commission, talk about, identify where the, the growth is and, and I think you'd already kind of identified most of those growth areas, uh, within the community. And then as far as the adoption process, planning commission, they had a public hearing, um, on the, last one, the fourth. Fourth, uh, and they recommended to move it on and recommend the option for the city councils. So now there's a public hearing for the city council, public input, and it's closed, they do adopt it, so. And then we'll get to the final copy, so.
Any comment from the public? Seeing none, make a motion to close the public hearing.
A big motion?
Uh, motion been made by, I'll give it to Pam and seconded by Bob to close the public hearing. All in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries, number sixteen, discussion, act, action, resolution number six, five, zero, adoption and recommendations of community comprehensive plan. Second? Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Number twenty, discussion, interlocal with Pierce County for non-emergency police and utility dispatch service.
Okay, so we've been noticing some issues with our call system, we've talked about it, hit on before, we thought there was a couple of different issues. Officer Halliwell had many problems with it, she's had phone calls to have them come in.
Please come along.
For five, six hours after the call.
Sometimes days, I'm talking ten days and that's a problem.
So, um, yeah, yeah, that's what you see popularly too. Um, and then the same thing, um, we have some of our utilities guys' cell phones, it doesn't translate across there. We've taken it in, tried getting service and they just have mail fixes, things happen. So, um, we thought the best way to do it was obviously go through the county, they log all the stuff, they'll be able to do printouts. Um, luckily, when we got our computers together through the grant, uh, all that stuff will mesh, so essentially those at our, uh, police's computers and with theirs and it'll all mesh as one unit, which would be really nice. Um, we do not have, uh, a pricing yet, they are still working on that, they've had some changes in, in dispatch lately. Um, I'm supposed to get with Rick and whoever, his manager will be.
Alicia.
Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you. And, um, Ted, if you guys decide to go through with it, Ted, the counter attorney would, um, wrap an interlocal between us. And we decide on a price or we'll agree to a price later on. So this is more of just if you are thinking it's a great idea, we'll continue, and I'll tell Ted to make the interlocal agreement, we'll come back with a number.
Now, we currently pay the phone company right for the auto attendant or s?
It's just a separate phone number.
Separate.
Yeah, it's a separate phone number, yeah.
So that would go away.
That would, we'll, we'll, yeah, be able to mesh some of our, get rid of some of our numbers with telephone company and hopefully some savings. But I would look for, so currently Pierce pays, um, Pierce PD pays three hundred fifty dollars a month, but that's about a twelve-year-old contract. So I look for ours to go up significantly and they're gonna take our utility side. Um, Pierce, I think they have a line in their dispatch, so they know when we call, they're picking up people from Pierce.
Sure.
We can work those details out, but, um, I guess that's where we stand on that and I guess if anybody's thinks it's a bad idea.
So it's basically, well, I guess it don't say action, but just like a nod of the head to move forward.
Well, uh, yeah, they said if they do give everything, we come to agreement, I'll, we'll obviously come back here with a price that we'll agree upon, sign the interlocal agreement and then we start July first, cause that's their fiscal year.
Right.
So that'd make it for their budget focuses and everything, so I kinda just wanna let you guys know and, I mean, if there was somebody who was absolutely against it, we can talk about it or we'll keep moving forward.
Things are great ideas, yeah.
I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with improving that, I don't know if there's issues going down there myself, so.
Yeah, so I would, I would think it, I would imagine, I don't know what the pricing will be at, but we'll bring it back before we obviously sign your local agreement, so.
Did they ever diagnose what the actual problem was? I mean, if it's.
Which one?
The one with, I guess, getting, getting the call ten days later, ten days later, or?
Nope.
Not that I'm aware of, and we, we have.
They don't know where the hiccups at, or?
I have to check, I, excuse me, when I get the call, I'll, or not when I get the call, but when they make the call, leave their message, it should come to me within a matter of minutes. And it doesn't even go to my primary email, it goes to social, it goes to spam, it go, I have, so I have to look through every single folder that I have with my email.
That's currently set up through, by you telephone company?
Yep. Yes, and.
They can't tell you what the issue is, or?
No, it works, nope.
Yep, and we've took it there, and same with our utility guys, we.
Some days.
Like there's no, they have no clue, or?
At one point in time, we're told to Google it, so.
Sometimes it works great, sometimes it doesn't, and more times than not, it doesn't work at all.
Yeah.
I could get a call that's, may not be nine-one-one worthy, but is worthy enough for me to get there like right now. For example, I had a call the other day, come in, I got it probably four hours after the fact and it's probably one that I needed to get there within minutes. Hospital called, I was working in dispatch, they called, left them, uh, nine-one-one because they had a helicopter coming in. And I said, well, how far out are they? I'm sorry, I'm working in dispatch right now, I said, five minutes, I'm like, mm, can't make it, I can't get a deputy there. Well, we called you guys thirty minutes ago and left a message, and I got it at five o'clock that night, this came in at like two in the afternoon. And that happens more times than not, so.
Yeah, we don't know if it's a translation between email addresses to their computing system, or we?
I was, yeah, I guess I don't know, I don't completely understand what the whole process is between Pierce County and Plainview and then I assume Plainview.
Oh, there, there is no process, okay, so currently there's nothing with Pierce, we're, we're going with Pierce Dispatch, like their nine-one-one dispatch center would be, they had a local agreement with, yeah, Pierce County.
Well, that's what you're talking about, right, the interlocal, right, I'm just talking about the current system as it stands.
Has nothing to do with Pierce, yeah.
Right now, when the city offices close, you call and it goes to the phone company, supposed to send out an email and whoever's on call.
But, yeah, I guess that the question then would be, tell your telephone company, you think that they would?
When we went to the auto attendant, the phone company.
I think the, the nice thing about it too is, uh, like, all the communities got that grant that we helped with last year and so they all have the same computer system now. And then we're also now working on what state rad, radios for every entity, so they will literally be on the same system.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be a lot easier.
Yeah.
I just look at it as a safety and security standpoint.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want somebody saying, oh, you could've got here and helped me, I called you five hours ago, why are you just showing up now?
Yeah.
You know, and that, I mean, not, not to say that, oh my god, look at me, I'm messing up, it's just I need to get there.
Right, yeah.
And if I can't get there and something happens and that falls on me.
Well, no, they should call nine-one-one, it was emergency, though.
Well, but even, but honestly, Jeremy, you're right, but sometimes they're not all nine-one-one worthy.
Yeah.
And it could escalate from an, uh, you know, like, from, uh, just.
Something minor to something big.
Exactly.
Routine, yeah, yeah.
Right, so, um.
And the nice thing is, uh, later on, like reports, they will print out everything for the reports, like, uh, Chris will show me the other day, so they'll literally show you every call that four-four-oh-seven attended in a month's time for non-emergency, emergency, how they acted, respond. So, I mean, if you really wanna get in depth of what they do, it will, it will explain the entire work.
Somebody else, yeah, somebody else had a question about when they called, you can say, well, it's right here.
Yep.
Everything's documented.
And it's all documented by a third party, which is nice to learn.
Number twenty-one, discussion, action, request for street closures, Lincoln Avenue for Plainview Public Schools for track meets on four-twenty-nine, five-ten and five-twelve, fall sports kickoff eight-nineteen and football games eight-twenty-six, eight-twenty-nine, nine-two, nine-twelve, nine-twenty-three, nine-twenty-six, nine-thirty and ten-ten.
You know, times there, he was unable to make it, but he actually let, printed out everything this time, so.
Make a motion, Mr.? For the request of the street closures on Lincoln Avenue for the dates that were given.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Pam? Bob? Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Number twenty-two, discussion, action, health board recommendations for nuisance properties added four-eleven-twenty-two. First one is one-oh-seven West Locust Avenue, which is a repeat and it is worse than ever. Sorry, that's what we said in the health board meeting.
That's a quote?
That's a quote. Since you don't have the minutes in front of you, that's what we decided, it was worse than ever.
Oh, I'm knowing worse than the situation.
And if you approve, under the new agreement, it will go straight to Luke and he will, it will cut out Bruce and Courtney and everyone else.
Is that correct? From here goes to Luke and he handled it.
Fine with me, and he, he wrote me a month ago, I think I brought it up at the meeting and wanted to make sure I agreed with him that these can be prosecuted directly, well, that's, well, we decided six months ago. So, yeah, that's, if he can get on those, that's the way to go.
I have a question.
Yes.
Chris, could you know, does, does Jerry stay in communication with Luke about what's going on?
I talked to Luke yesterday, as a matter of fact, um.
So, I mean, what I, what I wondered is if we can't, before our health board meeting, if, if you were Jerry, can't present us with information that's happened
Absolutely.
In the last month.
That'll happen.
That'd be great.
Yep.
I was curious if that's what would happen, that sounds good.
Okay, motion by Tyler, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bob, Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero, and the second one is two-twelve North Plum, which is also a repeat.
What'd we say about that, Brian?
It's worse than ever.
Worse than ever. And things in the vehicle, but we can't touch the vehicle, that. So?
End quote.
End quote, and we'll make that motion as well, however, if you want a word.
One second, okay, uh, Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero, number twenty-three, discussion, action, possible purchase of street sweeper? And Troy, if you have any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Not to be a pain in the behind, but these were added four-eleven and, and the sweeper was four-eleven, that would be today, are they both emergency items? It was yesterday, today's the twelfth.
And before the, as?
Before five PM on the eleven, okay, just asking, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
And, and just what, we usually try not to do that too much, but not just miscommunication, we haven't talked to Jerry, he usually.
No, that's fine, I just was wondering.
Okay, yep.
Yep.
Does anybody, or, does anybody have any questions to Troy for what's going on with the city streets or the city, uh, possible purchase of the street sweeper?
Would you like to stand up and talk about it, about the street sweeper at all?
You want a street sweeper, stand up there.
That's the deal.
Did you guys get the pictures?
I got the picture, did everybody look at the pictures?
I had pictures of the points, uh, on the email, I didn't have time to look at it.
Got any questions?
If, well, basically it's newer and it works and it's guaranteed to work.
It works, it functions very well.
Price is right.
Price is awesome, I think, my opinion.
Kurt, Kurt told me that he thinks the best thing about it is, and then one picture, you see this circular device, and I asked what it was, and he said it's an automatic greaser. So obviously with all the dust and everything happens, it greases constantly, essentially.
Well, way more advanced than what we have.
Can you tell them what's, what our, ours has problems with and what it doesn't do?
Where do you want me to start?
What works on it, that sweeper?
Yeah.
Stringwell? Engine? It's, when we buy that, fifteen years ago from City Kimball. So paid five thousand dollars for it, sight unseen, we've used it since then, and we've stuck.
We're sticking money to an airplane.
Courtney could probably go back and, it's nickel and diamond. And that's bluntly, it's done its deed, you know. It, it functions, but it just takes three times as long, where instead of one pass, you gotta go five.
Do you think that the conditions of the streets affect the efficiency of that big piece of equipment?
No.
All the, the potholes and the cracks and the?
No.
No.
They're, they're made to adapt to the.
The other one is not adapting.
The only thing I can say, you know, come on down, I'll give you a ride in it, you know, it, it just, it's served its purpose, we've talked about, we've had this discussion way back when Mike was here, for years.
I don't think there's any wrong with per, you know, looking into purchasing a street sweeper. I'm just trying to figure out what we have a budgeted and we bought it back home and what else did we buy?
Um, we, we did talk about the street sweeper and budget, a new one, and we decided it wasn't feasible, that was a hundred and some thousand, there wasn't any used ones.
No, two.
Well, it has one, yeah, one, yeah, one, yeah, um, there wasn't any quality used ones on the market.
Exactly.
Rarity or they're over a hundred thousand a time, um, we.
And what's, how much is this?
Fifty thousand, um, we did, we did purchase all of our other items later in the season, fiscal year, so we budgeted for like thirty-four thousand dollars, I think, for payments on loans and stuff, and we just now got our loan through, so we have that. I mean, an inch on that, or I don't know, but what's that? We had no stone removal, yeah, um, we, will it be a little bit more? It will, I think, I think we can handle this fiscal year and we'll budget for it for next, for payments and stuff, personally, but. As I emailed out and, um, it's up to you guys, I mean, I'm a, I'm a guy, if we budget for it, great, if we don't, we probably shouldn't, but there's times that, we put it on late, cause it came in late, you don't know these things till they come up and it's, from what I understand from Kurt and Troy, I'm not really knowledgeable about it all, but it's kind of rarity to find, find something like this around.
Are you dumping more money into it to keep it running as opposed to like, let's just get it?
Yes, I mean, you definitely are at this point.
Money, oil, uh.
Time-wise.
You know, all the years I worked for the city, Troy spent wartime mechanics and he did sweeping the streets and he was always getting yelled at, but not giving it down because he couldn't sweep. Cause he was in a shop being worked on, I mean, you know, I mean, it's just simple, he just needed to get a, just needed to get one.
It's, it's done its deed, well, put it this way.
I mean, I, I get the.
Three years to this year, this fiscal year already.
Three years ago, four years ago, the same machine was on the market for almost ninety thousand. The only reason they are doing this is they are all Pelican, it's City Sue City, they have all Pelicans. They wanna move this one to get a, uh, truck mount because they have to go to the other end of the city to do intersections and stuff. The Pelicans are too slow, they wanna, that's why they, to move it.
And you have tested this one actually operated it, correct?
Yes.
User friendly, no additional training then?
No, it was awesome.
What do they need to know by?
We just, if, if you guys decide yay or nay, we'll handle it from that way.
What do we do with the old ones, can we sell it?
I'm thinking it's part of dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
About five thousand, probably not even worth a whole.
It sounds like we put over five thousand into it.
Um, we have.
Doesn't matter.
We have.
Okay.
I, I think the brooms are being inter, the big broom interchanges and everything, so we have our spare parts to actually mount to that one already.
Plus, plus, they're being nice and gonna let us have the extra parts they have for that one, if we decide to pursue it. Not me, but.
Who are, who are you proposing to buy this from, there's nothing?
City, Sioux City.
Nothing in the package, Sioux City?
Sioux City Island.
Sioux City Island, yes. Yeah, I see, did you not get the email either?
There's no warranty, I assume, this is just as is? Is there any paperwork on it at all, that they offer to sell it on certain terms or something? Just all emails and phone calls?
We could.
That was between Kurt and Troy, went there and talked to him and get the paperwork on there.
We, we could, I, I am quite sure they've given us all their paperwork on, they've got a shop from hell, they got a gorgeous shop. Three full-time mechanics, I'm sure that they would send us their maintenance record on that.
Just put on a flat bed, if we buy it, then a flat bed or something has to go get it, obviously.
How would the city finance that, though, like, what's the process behind that, is it a loan or?
Yeah, we'd have to get a loan for it, yep, yep, um, yeah, that's, that's obviously we'd have to get a loan for it, I guess. I guess the good part about it now is the interest rates are still low. In a year's time, who knows what it'll be? Um, who knows if you'll find a sweeper, which, not saying we should get it or not, I mean, all those things are out there.
More than loans, Jerry.
Three to five years.
You want them to be.
Five.
Yeah, our last one was five years.
Five.
Yep, we usually make quarterly payments to them, so. Yep. So basically, the street department, that's, I mean, it's not like two, a five-year loan for fifty thousand dollars for the street department is not. And that's something that, that we have to think about, too, is whenever we think about, geez, we spent money here and there. Not, not all apartments are one unit. I mean, we have revenue, income, receiving departments, we have our tax department, so when we say, yeah, we, well, we, like, we bought a backhoe, that's, that's, that's the transfer station budget. That's not the street's budget, you know, so I mean, there's, there's difference in there too, so it's really not fair for the newspaper guy to bundle them all up together and write a report about them.
Saying I should do that, or?
No.
Okay. What does the council wish to do for the purchase of the street sweeper from the city of Sioux City Island?
I would like to make a motion to purchase this street sweeper, Pam.
Second? Second by Pam, vote, or, okay, voting, Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Number twenty-four, council comments, Bob? Pam?
Yeah.
Tyler?
Okay, I got that award. Thank you. That's humble. I mean, out of all the town in the, our size, right, or just all.
The entire state.
Entire state.
Norfolk has been trying to win this award for ten years. Come on this red island, they've never won. Omaha's never won.
What do they select on? Like, what are they, what are they looking at when they choose you?
Um, well, there's like huge criteria.
Yes.
Um, they want to show, describe how community leaders and residents come together during the past five years to identify your goals and build necessary implementation strategies. So they wanna see like, did you have a plan? Who did you bring to the table? Provide the goals identified by partnerships between the community, local, regional organization and your businesses. Describe the outcome of the community strategic planning process as identified in parts one and two. Um, then we, I mean, we have like four pages of.
No, that's fine.
Well, then they want you to describe like local, state, federal resources mobilized by the community to achieve your goals. Um, who, who did you collaborate with? Who did you bring to the table? How many grant dollars were you able to leverage? Like, are you successful at bringing in additional funding? And we were the most successful town of the state this year, so, yeah, it's kinda a big deal. But yeah, Norfolk's gonna be really bad when they find out about this because they've literally actually hired someone to write this application for them.
That's what you get.
The last three years, and they haven't won. And they've done a lot. I mean, Norfolk has done a lot, and we, I guess, did it a little bit better, so. It's kinda cool, yeah.
Mr. Hart, oh, yes, that's right.
It's not just me. You guys approved all the crazy crap I threw in, you know?
No, I don't.
You had to write the paper, so.
You're the driver.
Mr. Hart, do you have anything to report, um, on the condition of the city of Plainview as a superintendent?
No, I don't.
All right. Motion to adjourn? Motion by Bob, second. All in favor, Tyler?[1795.95]